Okay, the time is now six o'clock and a call to order this May first, two thousand twenty-four council workshop meeting. We begin with Pledge of Allegiance, please, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, first up, we have citizens to be heard, so if there's anybody who would like to be heard on any issue of our government, come on up. Mitch, how are you?
Hi, Mitch Shiles, six twenty-four West Louder Street, and I'll try to keep this as quick as possible. As many of you remember, a year ago, I briefed Borough Council on an analysis of crash data I had been conducting. And those of you who were there will remember that the only reliable data for bicycle and pedestrian crashes are crashes where serious injuries or fatalities occur due to lack of reporting or under-reporting. We've reanalyzed the most recent crash data for a ten-year period in Carlisle is now fourth in the Commonwealth and has a greater number of hospitalizations than Pittsburgh, a city of three hundred thousand. But that's not why I am here. Four weeks to the day after giving that presentation, May thirty-first, the morning of the strategic plan workshop, I was hauling a load of scrap wood in my bike trailer from my garage to my wife's studio, not even a block over from our house. I can remember thinking before I left, I took that trip, that I'm only going over a half-block. I don't need to put the camera on my bicycle. And I almost considered not wearing my bright yellow helmet, which is out in my bicycle right now. I dropped off the wood at my wife's studio and pulled out onto Cedar Street, only a few doors down from where Jackie's brother lives. He occasionally cat-sits for us. I stopped fifteen to twenty feet behind a dark teal Honda CRV and waited for them to turn at the intersection. At that moment, I heard some yelling coming from the vehicle. I thought it was a bit odd, but not out of the ordinary for Carlisle. Then the vehicle's backup lights came on and I asked myself the question, do they see me? I started to position myself so I was at least visible in two of their mirrors. At that moment, the driver of the CRV floored their vehicle backwards, accelerating fast enough to make their tires screech. My first thought was that they were trying to kill me, since only a few weeks prior, there was an incident of an irate driver maneuvering their car in a threatening manner around Dickinson Students. I drove out of the, I dove out of the way just as their SUV struck my front wheel, causing the handlebars to hit my right shin, leaving me with a nine-inch contusion. The crash ended up bending my front wheel, breaking several spokes and breaking the brake lever and off my handlebars and dislocating the handlebars. That bicycle on its own weighs less than my son. After getting up, I asked the driver what the F she was doing. Sorry, I was just kind of a little bit upset at the time. The driver told me that she didn't see me despite having three good mirrors and a functioning backup camera. Had I not been recently researching crashes, I probably would have just asked the driver to get out of my neighborhood. But I decided I wanted to report the crash. I wasn't interested in monetary compensation since I knew how to repair my own bicycle. And I called the Carlisle Police Department after the driver told me this is the reason why cyclists should stay off the road, quite literally with my front door in view, in plain sight. After I called the police, a friend of the driver's pulled up in their grayish silver minivan and asked almost comically, did that biker just hit you? I then believe I overheard her saying the reason she was driving in that manner was because she wanted to make a point to her teenage niece sitting in the passenger seat about making up her mind over whether or not she wanted a beverage from the Quick Stop. Officer A.J. Young was the responding officer. I didn't mention the aggressive specifics of the crash to him for two reasons. I didn't think I needed to for the crash to be reported, and I wanted to show the driver grace. I only told him that the driver backed into me and that I wasn't seriously hurt, that I didn't need any money because I wasn't going to fix my bicycle myself, and that I just wanted to report the crash. He told me that because I wasn't in need of medical attention and that there wasn't any monetary damages being requested, that the crash wouldn't be reported to Pendott. Had Cedar Street been laid out like B Street between Fairground Ave and College, or if it had bike boxes or a protected bike lane, I don't think this incident would have happened. I brought this up at council because I wanted to voice support for the traffic calming on Bedford and East Street and that any lengthy delay on the street, uh, street improvement will continue to put lives at risk. If you need a copy of the crash report, I have it here. And it's a gray image, but you can see the dent in it. It's a little better when it's in color. Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Mitch. Thank you for sharing that story. You know, we take that to heart. Thank you. We're glad you're here tonight. Any other public comment? Okay, what I'm going to do, because we have, we have an individual by phone, we're having some technical issues with Zoom, so we have somebody on a cellphone who's going to be available for, for any presentation or questions on the item under sustainability and community planning. I'm, I'm going to move that up in the agenda if Counselor Hicks is satisfied with that.
So, Steve and I have one item. I move that Borough Council approve the request by Carlisle Auto Industries to waive preliminary plan review per section two twenty-six dash nineteen. I request to waive the number of driveways per str- street frontage per section two twenty-six dash twenty-four dot K dot T F and approve the final plans for lot one of the former IAC site, subject to conditions imposed by staff.
Motion by Counselor Hicks to approve the request by Carlisle Auto Industries to waive preliminary plan and waive the number, the number of driveways per street frontage and approve the final plans for lot one of the former IAC site, subject to condit- conditions imposed by staff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. I, I know we have, Tom, you're, you're here to, to present. We do have Joe Tanner by, by phone, Tom, if there, there's anything that Joe would need to address.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you, members of Borough Council. You've seen us before. My name's Tom Ritchie, a consultant to Carlisle Auto Industries, Inc., that owns the former Maslin site. We have been at this for seven or eight years, and finally, we're just about finished with it. One of the last developments is a lot number one, which the land development plan is before you today. It was approved or recommended for approval by planning commission some months ago. There is a delay in us getting to you folks primarily around financing issues, rises in interest rates. Made things a little dicey here and, and more difficult to put the capital together, but we're finally there. So, we have on the land development plan, a restaurant on the corner of A Street and Carlisle Springs Road. That'll be called Pompeii, and that is Alfred Lenuzzi. He was also successful, as I'm sure you know, last month or a month and a half ago, getting an economic development liquor license from PLCB after about eight months of hard work. So, we're very excited about that. That's the good news. The bad news is that PLCB requires him to be in and open for business within six months of the issuance of that license. So, now it's from hurry up, I mean, from wait to hurry up. We think we can make it. We have all of our other items and issues in motion, architectural, planning, everything else, utility companies. Trying to fill out this, one of the last undeveloped parcels of the former Maslin site. We can't disclose who the eighteen thousand square foot grocery store is. We're about to execute the lease with them, so I'm afraid they'll have to remain nameless. I can only say that they're a national tenant based out of California. They have a significant presidency in Pennsylvania, and they are aggressively expanding throughout the Mid-Atlantic region. So, we think they'll be an excellent addition to the neighborhood. And then we have a small strip of retail that we're pre-leasing right now. The parking lot is parking in common as well as street parking. And all in all, I think we're pretty excited about it. It's close to a little over an eight million dollar investment. And we'll go along the way to help lots of things, including all the tenants that are there, as well as the TIF financing and all of, all of the things that go into this very complicated project that you've all heard an awful lot about over the years. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer. Oh, by the way, we do have staff's review comments. The only one we have a little bit of an issue with is the automatic system on shopping carts, but we're going to work that out with the tenant.
Okay. Any questions from council? Okay. Okay, comments, comments are fine, too.
They're good comments. That's right. I want to say thank you to so many people here that have put in years, months, hours, days, calls, meetings. This has been a labor of love and also struggle. And I know that we can't announce who the grocery is, but the, the dream that I wouldn't let die is to have a grocery store in a food desert here in Carlisle. And to have this happen warms my heart, puts a smile on my face. And the other things that I just want to say, not just with the meetings, but I mean, it's, it's taken from the very first meetings that we had about the, the factories closing and the demolition. What did you want there? A grocery store. And there were starts and, and, you know, and then things didn't happen. So, I just want to recognize a couple of people that maybe aren't here and little bits are what ma- that all come together to make something like this happen. Harold and, and Carlisle Events, obviously, huge work, the retailer. But Jared and Susan have put in many hours on this recently to get this to this point. Additionally, I, my other job is at Dickinson, and there have been at least three classes that have done work, which I gave to you, ended up in different hands. And so, Professor Heather Betty's class on Cumberland County Food Assessment, looking at what we need here. Professor Helen Takas's class looked at three different types of grocery stores that could be worked in a, in a place like this. And Professor Neil Leary's looking at biking and walkability specifically to grocery stores. These might not be the critical things that make something like this happen, but they're things that help tell the story as to why this place in this little spot that maybe isn't exactly what the retailer would always gravitate towards, can make it unique and wonderful. It's going to be placed between a skate park and another park. So, as a mom, when I had little kids, if I could tell my kid that I could drop them off to the playground afterwards, it makes it a unique place that I think is uniquely Carlisle, and I appreciate that. And I know that we went back and forth on things that the Borough wants and the things that, you know, the developer wants, and this is what compromise is. This is why we, we take time to make sure that we can ensure that we can support good thoughtful development and, and also think about how it fits in our community. So, I want to acknowledge, because I know some of the, the things have been worked on in, in behind the scenes, and to bring this here, it looks great, but there's so many hours. And I appreciate it. So, thank you so much. And I can't wait to hear that the lease will be signed.
Yeah, we, we actually, Susan and Jared and us, we agreed on everything, so.
Great.
There was no problem.
And, and one more thing.
We had many, many long meetings.
I know. I know you did. And for the, for the developer, I mean, I also hope that because it is a slightly different model compared to what some, some of the other stores maybe look like, that we can be a place that they like showcased, right? And it is walkable and bikeable, and I hope our bike friends bike over, you know, and skate over as well, because there's a skate park there. You know, like, and, and so I think that it can also be something that the development themselves can, can say that this was something that they are proud of as well, rather than it's just another store. It's like, it's a special store.
Yeah, you've heard me say before that, you know, there's a reason why Pennsylvania has many, many empty vacant factory buildings that sit there for fifty years with nothing happening. It was the foresight of the Borough Government and a local pillar of the community on the private side getting together a ton of grants, a ton of tax and government financing. I mean, that stuff just doesn't happen every day. That takes some real dedication and heavy lifting, and we've enjoyed our partnership with the Borough, even though Jared's pretty tough.
Thanks for helping boost his reputation, Tom. Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? And Tom, I'll, I'll say thank you, too. I would reiterate everything that Deputy Mayor said. I also don't want it to be lost on, on us, and Tom, you may not even be aware of this, that when Hope Station was established in two thousand one, there was a promise made to that community that there would be a grocery store. So, it's been twenty-three years, but, but we're making good on that promise, and that's, that's thanks to this public-private partnership.
It's not a typical grocery location. I've been in grocery development for forty years, and we tried everybody and finally found a good neighbor at grocery, and it took eight years, but we're there.
Thank you. Okay, hearing nothing further, I will call a question. Do we want to do a roll call? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you all. And, and Mr. Tanner, you're, you're still there? No. Oh, there you are. Well, we, I don't know if you heard all that, but we, we voted on it. The, the, the motion has, has passed. So, you can hang on and listen to the rest of our meeting, but you don't need to.
Oh, okay. I appreciate the advice, but thank you for approving it. We look forward to being a part of this community for many, many years to come.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Okay, now, back to the order of business. We move, move on to the outside agencies requests. So, these, these requests are now made semi-annually. The, we have ten thousand dollars allotted twice a year to make these really many, many grants. Tonight is to hear from, from the applicants. It's just an opportunity for council to, to have an exchange, have any questions that might need to be answered. The next step in that will be that the, the recommend- the, the recommendation will be made by a member of the Sustainability and Community Planning Committee, along with a member of the Budget Finance Committee. And because we don't have an assistant Borough Manager right now, it'll be the Borough Manager, I assume, or, or your, your delegate. Yeah. And then that recommendation will come back to, to council, and we will vote on that. I don't know if we have, probably at the June meeting, I imagine we'll be able to get it pulled together by then. But, but decisions will be made by the end of June for anybody who wasn't aware of that. So, we will move on and commence the presentations. Carlisle Band.
My thanks to the council for letting me come and talk to you very briefly here. I'm Jim Schufeld, I'm the president of the Carlisle Band, and we've been a proud member of this community formerly since nineteen hundred, but actually, we trace our roots to eighteen forty-four, when the first Carlisle Band was created. We're a five-one-three-C organization for the last five decades. And our premier event every year is the Grand Souza Concert. That is a concert that is done in August. It represents, if you will, a commemoration of the one-time Souza's band came to Carlisle around the turn of the century and was started thirty-eight years ago by Eric Henry, Carlisle High School graduate and professional tuba player in the Harrisburg Symphony. The Carlisle Band took that over about six or seven years ago, and we're now the lead planner and executor of that concert. And the purpose of that is to celebrate Souza's music. This is unique. It's the only event like this in Cumberland Ca- in Cumberland County. We bring in representatives from at least six community bands, ranging from Harrisburg to Shippensburg, as well as representatives from as far east as Dillsburg in Indianapolis County. Put about seventy people on the stage and bring in normally seven to eight hundred members of the audience. What we're asking for this year is some help in putting this concert on. It costs us about three thousand dollars to do this every year. That's primarily composed of rental for the beautiful Carlisle Theater, which we feel it's very important to use. We play an honorarium to the guest conductor or the, and a guest performer if we have that and there's printing and publicity and music publishing or purchasing. It all ends up being around twenty-five to three thousand dollars. And this year, our estimate is three thousand. Last year, we were able to get some help from M and T Bank. This year, we saw the opportunity. We're asking for some assistance from fifteen hundred dollars from the Borough and fifteen hundred dollars from the Members First. I have not heard from them yet. A little bit about, you know, why this is, this is important and how it meets the plan. Does this benefit the Carlisle community? And I would say absolutely. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find an organization in this town that more broadly represents, excuse me, represents the community than the Carlisle Band. Our ages range from fourteen to eighty-seven. The only requirement to join the band is the ability to play musical instrument to essentially high school level and, and the willingness to commit to performing. We show, we intentionally charge no fees or dues for membership, nor do we charge or admission to any of our concerts. We survive on the donations from our sponsors, patrons, some of the venues where we perform and any grants that we might find. And as anybody who's been in a volunteer organization like that, it's, it's always a challenge in the budget. Last year, we ended up at the end of the year, a hundred dollars a hit. We weren't sure we were going to make it, but we had some donations at the end of the year, so all worked out great. But we again rely on the generosity of the community to help us go. We don't only do this concert. We perform Memorial Day with the, with the Carlisle High School. We perform Veterans Day at, at the War College. We perform with the Hundred and Sixtieth Reenactment. So, we feel we are an important part of the community in celebrating the community. So, definitely, it is a broad membership, and we get audience from throughout the county. Overall impact, we will probably have, what, thirty-five musicians from Carlisle and thirty-five from the other bands. We'll probably have again seven to eight hundred in the audience. What happens is on Sunday afternoon, we do a quick rehearsal. Everybody breaks and goes to all the great eating spots in Carlisle that are open on Sunday, come back, and we do the concert that evening. So, there is a little bit of an economic impact, and we bring in people who might not otherwise come to Carlisle. And so, I think that's a great thing for the community. We did a strategic framework. Two quick things I wanted to highlight were, you know, from the comprehensive plan, downtown Carlisle is a regional economic and cultural center. I think we're definitely helping with that. As I said, we're a unique event in this county, and it brings people into Carlisle. And we love to use the theater because it is such an absolutely unique place to play. There are some costs to doing that, but I think they're worth paying. And when anything we can do to sustain that theater through its use is a positive thing. The second thing is in the strategic framework, talking about the outcome areas, and I would go to the one about vibrant and thriving, you know, an inclusive and engaged community. As I said, the thing about this band is we don't really care whether you have a degree in music. We don't care where you went to school. We don't care where you live in the community. All we care is that you want to perform. And if you come to our rehearsal, you see a very broad mix of the community, and we encourage that and do everything we can. And if you show up and want to play and don't have an instrument, we'll find you one. And that's, that's basically our motto. If you want to play, we'll find a place for you. So, I just ask you to consider our proposal. Again, we're asking for fifteen hundred dollars to help us with this, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Does council have any questions? Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Next is Central Pennsylvania HBCU and Workforce Fair. Good evening, Doreen.
Hello, everyone. All right. Well, I am so used to talking for a living that I didn't write much down, so I already have someone to say stop when I go too far, so. So, again, I am Doreen Wilber. I live here in Carlisle. I was also a teacher here in Carlisle for twenty years, both at the middle school and the high school. I started the HBCU, worked, well, ne- I started it as the HBCU College Fair and HSI. So, HBCU stands for Historically Black Colleges and Universities. HSI stands for Hispanic Serving Institutions. So, I want to give you just a little bit of history. The reason that I started this is because as one of literally a handful of teachers of color, specifically black teachers in the Carlisle Area School District, I realized that many of our students did not have the equitable opportunity to learn about HBCUs and HSIs. With my child, I was able to, you know, take her on a college tour to different states. We know that not every, everyone has that opportunity. And so, after I took her, I had my, my daughter, who's now twenty-three, who attended an HBCU and who is now a nurse. She, she had an opportunity to share her experiences with students. And I literally had not only students, but adults say that they had never heard of or been introduced to HBCUs and HSIs. Therefore, in two thousand twenty-two, we had our very first HBCU fair in HSI, and that was held at the YWCA here in Carlisle. The second was held at Stewart Community Center. So, thus far, we have served a, a little over seven hundred students free of charge. We created it so that it is pretty much a field trip style. Students would come in, feel, you know, be bustin'. They would receive breakfast free of charge. They even ate the fruit, so I was a little impressed. Then we served them lunch. We fed all of our representatives year two because we know HBCUs are somewhat under, they're really in need, but they're also underfunded. So, we noticed that there, we needed more reps, and so we turned to the workforce. And one of the ways in which, or one of the reasons that we did that is because although I have two college degrees, I have three brothers who never went to college. They are all retired. They're playing golf, and they make more money than me. So, therefore, we decided to add the workforce portion. That brought in even more diverse crowd. Carlisle schools, they are always in attendance. As a matter of fact, there are volunteers as well. That's current and former teachers. And now that we have a workforce portion, we have tables available for Carlisle businesses to come in. So, last year, we had Carlisle Construction. We had UPMC, the Carlisle Campus come in, and, and even more. And one success story to show you that this not only impacts children but adults, we had an adult come as a presenter, and her husband joined her. And now he actually has an apprenticeship with, with one of the companies who showed up and hosted a table. So, what we are asking for and everything, I, I hate to beg, but I've gotten somewhat good at it because everything that we do is literally just from asking and sharing our vision. And honestly, it is built upon the foundation of equity. I want you to just take a moment and think about how many black and brown students have not had equitable opportunities and access to education, right, to educational opportunities out there. And we know that HBCUs not only can provide that important history, right, but also they provide so many opportunities in terms of scholarships, in terms of internships, et cetera. And so, I would love your support. We are asking for two thousand dollars. We will take what you give us because we know how to, to make do. So, just looking at the little things that I wrote down here, what do we use the money for? Again, we use the money to feed students, to feed, feed volunteers. The first year, yes, our venue was free, but it was standing room only. The second year, um we had to pay and we outgrew that venue as well. So we are growing, but I want you to think about it like this. Now, we have over seven hundred kids who now know about Carlisle Area School District. We now have um close to a hundred adults who now know about Carlisle Area School District. And not just the district, they know about our city, they know about the businesses here. And they know that you support equitable opportunities for our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I was looking at my timekeeper. All right, we're good.
Any, any question?
Any questions? Thank you.
We should note too, Doreen, that you, you know, served on our truth and reconciliation.
Oh, forgot about that. Yes, that too.
Thank you for for both that and this.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next, Center for Music and Mental Health.
Let's see. Oh, it's all ready to go. Huh, awesome. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Nancy Farber. I am a psychologist and a musician and I am the program director for the young nonprofit organization called Center for Music and Mental Health. We are based here in Carlisle, actually, and um with the help of colleagues, I started this organization three years ago. So I want to begin my request just by um taking you to our website and telling you a little bit about our mission here. Okay, so our mission is to take the healing power of music and use it to help people with chronic mental illness, severe mental illness. People that we often say are marginalized, that get excluded sometimes from the community. People with schizophrenia, for example, people with severe developmental disabilities like autism or the population that we're currently working with, people with dementia. So I'm gonna uh show you a little clip of our recent program that we piloted down in Camp Hill before we got it ready to bring to our community. So here we go. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our to the performance of West Shore. I introduce you to our amazing choir, the Garden of West Shore. All right, well, so that's just a little snippet of our uh program. I encourage you to uh go to visit our website and you can watch the whole video there. So, um our pilot program, It's Never Too Late to Learn Music. As I said, we first piloted the program at a nursing home in Camp Hill, and that's what you saw right there. That's where we were. That was just a couple of weeks ago. And um we started a choir for people with dementia. And when I say dementia, most people only hear the word dementia, they think of Alzheimer's disease. But dementia has a variety of causes and we work with everyone. People who have dementia because they had a traumatic traumatic brain injury, maybe a motorcycle accident. People who have dementia because they had a stroke or maybe years and years of substance abuse. So we see it all on um the units that we work with in the nursing home. And we have um weekly rehearsals for our choir. We have regular communication with family members and staff. And it culminates in, as you see, a concert for residents, staff, families and the wider community, whoever would like to come. We involve student interns from Dickinson College, from both the music department and the psychology department. And as I said, we're very excited because in September, we're going to be bringing our program to a nursing home here in Carlisle. Worked out all the kinks in Harrisburg and now we're bringing it here. So we're very excited. So I want to address the three questions that you asked us to address in our um presentation. And the first is, so who will it benefit in the community? Well, who does it benefit? Obviously, the choir participants. It benefits the staff of the nursing home. It uh benefits other residents of the nursing home. It benefits family members of participants in town. Um, it benefits community members who attend the concert and become inspired. It develop, it benefits other community members who may have a family member with dementia or who may be struggling themselves with the beginnings of their own cognitive decline. And they become educated about possibilities. And it also benefits the Dickinson College community. What is the overall impact on the Carlisle community? Well, I'll start with the participants themselves. And we have found that participating in the choir decreases loneliness, increases friendships. A lot of people with dementia are extremely lonely. It improves cognitive functioning, including memory. It improves the quality of life and it gives people a sense of purpose and meaning in their life. We actually, we do formal research, we do formal interviews, and we also do um quantitative assessments. And we did that with this group here in Camp Hill. It has an impact on the nursing home community. Uh, we provide training for program sustainability. So one thing that we've decided is that we never want to leave a site, we never want to leave a nursing home without training the staff to take some kind of version of the program with them. So that when we move on to the next site, they can still benefit and have um those benefits. It benefits family members. Um, we've interviewed family members that, you know, we're told that it provides them comfort knowing that their loved one is involved in something like this and support for them with that, what whatever they're struggling with. It benefits community members. It educates and inspires. And finally, it benefits the college students and faculty, um providing mentoring and providing um work experience opportunities. And the last question that you asked us to address was, how does the mission align with the borough goals and plans? So I uh just pulled some quotes from the Carlisle Borough Comprehensive Plan and a few things that I saw that relate to our program and our mission is strengthening partnerships in the community, increasing social connectivity and community cohesion, and then integrating resources of strong institutions such as Dickinson College in this region. So I think that's my five minutes. Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Dr. Farber?
I don't have a question, but I want to say I love that. I don't know about anybody else, but I love music. I have to listen to it, hear it every day and it brings me a lot of joy. Even whenever I'm not feeling grand or I'm having a bad day. I said before to a couple of people, Leila Hathaway has a very soothing voice for me, so it makes me feel good when I'm feeling bad. So I think this is great. Um, and thank you for sharing your information and sharing the video. It's really good to see that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna get out of my email. Okay, hold on. I'll have to, I, I logged into my email here. I'll have to figure out how to get out of it. I don't know. I'll do that after. Okay, thanks.
Okay, next up, East Side Neighborhood Association. Curtis.
Nice uh previous uh groups looking for uh money to help the community. Um, my slide deck you've probably seen before, that's because we're repurposing the last one. Um, uh, I'll start with the mission statement. Uh, you can read it up there. But we basically got engaged uh to address local concerns, provide information to and unite and improve our neighborhood with the assistance of the Carlisle Police, uh Carlisle Borough uh Office and Code. Uh, it's been very effective. We've been in operation since two thousand nine. Uh, you can go ahead and switch to the next slide. Uh, with that, everybody meeting one time a month. Um, we're very effective in addressing issues and coming up with options and alternatives to things that we see with the frontline on the east side for Code. Uh, if we see something, we let them know and Code has been great about going in and and helping us with whatever that situation is. Um, if you look at our history here, we started the uh, we actually uh with the Biddle Mission Park, we adopted that. Uh, and with the borough's help, we did all the the so the paths and the equipment and stuff. And then we started up a catnip program in two thousand sixteen. Uh, we are the longest active community that we're aware of in Carlisle and probably the only one now from what we're here. So we can go to the next slide if you want. So some of our accomplishments to justify why we're asking for money because we're, like I said, we're very active. We do outreach uh programs with partnership, we partnership with SEDLER Health, uh LeTort Clean Up the Street. Um, Crime Watch, uh we do, I just put up a bunch of cameras too. If anybody is out in Biddle Mission Park and causing problems, then we get a pretty good footage. Um, we do cleanup projects. We just did one uh last weekend. Uh, I was very surprised compared it to other years. We only had one truckload of triad techs. I was very impressed with that. So that that means that the works out, clean up your yards. Uh, we reported, I think, two places that need uh codes to go take a visit. Um, but that is, that assists with your mission to keep Carlisle clean. So when people are driving through, they're not seeing them next. Um, we do two of those a year. Uh, we also assist with the Halloween Parade. And I think the biggest campaign we have going right now is the catnip program. And I will bring in Sherry Minnick. Uh, she heads that up and she does a great job. We've done over seventy cats so far.
Hi, Sherry Minnick, two twenty North Bedford Street. Um, I guess I'm the unofficial catnip person. Um, as Curtis said, we started in twenty sixteen and we went great guns until the pandemic. And then everything kind of came to a screeching halt. Um, because of pandemic, prices increased. And so when we restarted, things were more expensive. Our funds dwindled faster than we had anticipated. And so we were limited as to how many cats we could do. In catching cats, um we trapped several cats that had some medical, some obvious medical issues. And so in good conscience, we couldn't just release them. So we also not just paid to have them spayed or neutered, but we paid for medical costs. And we were able to because a member is a vet at Boiling Springs Animal Hospital. Been able to kind of shave off some of the costs, but still more than what we had anticipated. Um, right now we are partnering with Nobody's Cat Foundation. So it is forty dollars a cat. Uh, and they spay or neuter the cat, they give the cat vaccines for rabies and distemper. They tip the ear, so it is obvious the cat has been treated. Uh, because we've, we've trapped a couple of cats, maybe two, that have already been neutered, but the ears weren't tipped. So they were either somebody's pet that was abandoned or they were just somebody's pet that they got neutered. Um, we're not a rescue, but sometimes we find ourselves in a rescue position because people in our neighborhood know that we're the cat people. And so we find ourselves with situations, like I said, with um having cats that need to have medical treatment. Um, two weeks ago, kids found a cat in a recycling dumpster, gave it to my partner that I TNR with and um, you know, we advertised trying to find the the owners. We think the owners were evicted from an apartment building across the street from me and put the cat in the dumpster, but we don't have proof of that. And um so today we took and rescued, we, yeah, what do I want to say? We gave the cat to the Humane Society. Um, we didn't give it, it cost us. But so that we just didn't release the cat because it was somebody's pet. It was declawed. It was in good shape. But um in fairness to the cat, we couldn't just let it go. So we do find ourselves spending more money than just neutering. Um, we'd like to speak to keep to just neutering, but I don't know. I think the word's out that we're cat people and we have, we can't say no. So thank you.
Thank, thank you, Beth.
We would like to kind of extend our model, um if we could, if we can get the right resources uh in that catnip program to other parts of the borough. So that is a consideration. There's, there's a lot of cats out there.
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, Curtis, because I had somebody reach out to me about a week ago on the west side of the borough. So I was going to get in touch with Sherry.
Well, it's gonna be resources with vets and stuff, but we'll help coordinate.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Any, any questions or comments from Council?
I did, I did forget to mention, we have the biggest Easter egg hunt in Cumberland County. We're back after COVID stuff, so.
That's your, that's your, that's your drop the mic moment. All right, thank you, Beth. Okay, next up, Lamberton Community Garden.
My name's Eric Bond. This is my daughter Anna. Uh, we were here a couple of years ago and chatted with you and I didn't realize we were gonna give a little history, but I, we, I didn't do that last time. Um, in twenty-one, that winter, if you remember, we were all sort of masked up or not, but the schools were. And people were not coming out of their houses a whole lot. The garden at that time was, uh, I don't know if you ever walked by there, it was pretty beat up. And the woman who ran it left. And it, I know Keith Cole talked a little, she said, where are we gonna plant some tomatoes, Dad? We've got too many trees in our yard. We walked over, talked to um Keith after talking to some of the neighbors and said, can we bring people together and create this garden so we have people getting out of their homes and trying to work with each other so that they can actually realize who they're living next to? And um we, because we've lost a little bit of that. So that was sort of the beginning and you guys helped out about a year and a half ago. And as we've grown and some really exciting things have happened and started from these little nuggets of people wanting to have a little touch with each other. And from the very start, it was, can we get kids from the school, Lamberton Middle School, into the garden? And can we keep bringing food down to one of the local soup kitchens and we work with my brother's table? And that's been an integral part from the very start. Um, and I'll let Anna tell you a little bit about where we are now.
Um, I'm Anna Bond. Yeah, I'm a sophomore at Carlisle High School. And um I'm talking about the overall impact of the Carlisle uh Lamberton Community Garden. And um the main three points I wanted to touch on was, one, the Salvation Army. We donate about fifty percent of our crops there. Um, because our neighborhood can only take so much, but we wanted to actually help the community of Carlisle. And um that helps people be well-fed in a healthy way. And um the way that we can donate that food is we have a lot of kids working in the garden, um including students from Lamberton, the middle school, which I think is really important in their community because it allows a diverse group of students to get out of the closed classroom and get outside and work together with kids that they wouldn't be in contact with otherwise. And it also allows older kids like me to teach five to ten-year-olds how to plant things and how to teach a new generation how to cultivate food and not just go to the grocery store all the time. And I think that's really important to continue learning about our natural environment as well.
Anna didn't mention that she worked at the Leaf Project last summer, which you guys are, most of you are probably familiar with. It's, you know, full-time, all summer long. Um, because she's a runner for the high school, she doesn't have time in the winter to continue. But she's gonna work with CPC, the Central Pennsylvania Conservancy, trying to set up a volunteer program this summer. And this is all through working in the garden originally. I mean, I'm excited about it, but she's a high school kid. She gets to make up, make her own decisions on that. Um, goals articulated by the Community Planning Quality Life Committee Borough. You guys talk about community beautification. Um, if you walk down past Lamberton, I think the garden looks awful nice. When we're out there, people stop and they ask what's going on. And we give them a little, what I just said a few minutes ago about, here's the kids working in this garden. There's a bunch of us who maintain it when they can't be out there and then bring food down into the community. Um, we do have a formal partnership with the Central Pennsylvania Conservancy. They helped build the Pollinator Garden that's now around that. Um, we just this afternoon, we're trying to get that uh cleaned up a little bit so the plants will grow a little bit better. Um, DiaCon worked with us last year and they brought students and planted also in that um Pollinator Garden. And we have a, you know, group of volunteers who haven't seen you guys yet. We have people from most walks of the community coming over, but any of you are welcome. It'd be great to have some people from the political side. Um, the student teachers and teachers from the um middle school that come out. Uh, I gave some pictures because this is great for these students, being honest, said it better than I did about getting kids to understand there's a difference between just going in the store and getting something that's in plastic, that you can actually take a seed, put it in the ground, and months later. and months later pull out some nice fruit, fresh food. Um we also have, Keith Colestalk asked if there's another community organization, it's from the Carlisle Evangelical Free Church. And they'll be coming down and sending a group of kids somewhere between twenty and forty for a day or two to do work in the garden, which is another connection for us. Um we are working with CPC to get a map, which if you know where the shed is on there, we're sort of, you start at Le Torre um Park. And it goes all the way out to South Middleton. It's quite a ways. So that there's a map where people can see, here's the different organizations which are involved in these different plots of land. Um here's the, 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 where you go. Like I have people asking all the time, what's down, how far does the path go? Um and giving people a chance, they're looking at three different maps. So there's one with us, one down at the CPC barn and one down in South Middleton. So people would be able to get a nice idea of, wow, this is a whole network of um the, in the area that I can get out into with my family, you know, my friends and enjoy myself. I think, you know, the, the alignment with trying to have public and private partnerships, um having members of the community working together. I mean, we've got, this has started with a couple of people and we have a, a network of folks who are now connected and it's pretty exciting. So we're uh looking for another good season of bringing in some crops. If you walk over there, our first ones are just beginning to come up and uh that's exciting. So. Anything else for you? Questions? Any questions?
I, I got one out here. Do you guys take donations?
Yes.
We just dropped them off in your garden? Would that be all right? I mean, what do you like?
Absolutely. Yeah, if you have flowers you want to bring over, because the Pollinator Garden, the deer won a bit last year. So uh we're trying to repopulate that and uh, you know, so if you have anything you want to get rid of, just leave it down near the shed and we'll put it in.
Um I did have one question. So um looking at it, it says that you would want to use over half the funds towards building the hoop house? Do you have a specific amount of like a budget for that? Like is that?
Did not mine in that far.
Okay.
All right, it's probably gonna be about a thousand dollars because depending on how much money we have. Uh obviously, we have Pennsylvania weather. Um as the fall goes on, the students can't come out anymore because everything's dying. And we'd love to have a hoop house where this could go later into the year, start earlier in the spring. So it's a, a more regular, you know, in place for the kids to go. And that's what that's really about. So sorry for not having this really specific number. It's, it's a, a wish because we are all volunteers. There's no office, there's no, you know, it's just, we have Tuesday night, six thirty. We'll see you there. Um and drop them off on Tuesdays. That's great. Amazing, the stuff that goes on in this community. Thank you all for what you do. This has been a really exciting evening so far.
All right, thank you. I think that's, that's all. Thank you. Next up, Project Share.
I do have a prompt, so so I'll see, I'm not sure if you can be able to see it. So we, but I'll start. We are asking for money to help with our weekend. It's got a big long name, Weekend Nutrition Power Pack Program. It's food that we distribute. So this is an example. This is a weekend worth of food. It comes in this, this free anonymous black plastic bag to students in Carlisle Area School District and South Middleton. Obviously, we're just asking for funding for the Carlisle students. Project Share addresses food insecurity in the greater Carlisle area. Um we were founded in nineteen eighty-five. I should introduce myself. I'm Lisa Maddox. I'm the Director of Development for Project Share. Uh we don't charge for any of our services. So like Doreen, I will come and ask anyone for money anytime, anywhere, if we can help um meet our client needs. A lot of people are familiar with our summer feeding program. We run a very extensive ten-week summer feeding program. Um what fewer people know is that every weekend we provide uh these backpacks of food to the school districts based on the recommendations of their guidance counselors. So they don't come to us. Um the students, the guidance counselors tell us how many they need and we get them to the district. So how it benefits the Carlisle community, I think is pretty evident. Um one in three children in the Carlisle School District suffers from food insecurity. In the county, one in twelve individuals are food insecure. Food is the basis of good learning, good health, um productivity, everything we want for our community. So we feel that um we've, let's see, we feel that we are, you know, helping set this foundation. Um our demographics that we serve at Project Share in some, across some of our programming is income, has income limitations. This program does not. Like I said, the referrals come from the guidance counselors, so we let them make that judgment. Um last school year, we distributed five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six of these packs um in Carlisle alone. Because we get a lot of in-kind donations, um because we have a great purchasing power, we can source these for about six dollars a piece. So it's shelf-stable food because the kids are getting it in school. So we're not gonna give them fresh food or produce uh for practical reasons. But that means that our program cost us thirty, about thirty-four thousand dollars last year for the school district. So um we are asking for two thousand dollars to help make a dent in that. Um the truth is, we'll do this whether we get it or not. We'll take anything you would give to us. Uh but we are seeing need increasing across all our programming, so we expect these numbers to be up this year again. In terms of how we align with the borough's goals and plans, um we are among the nonprofits mentioned in the Comprehensive Plan as agencies that provide services uh to the community. We work with a lot of agencies who are here, a lot of um, we try to stay in our lane. We're good at distributing food, we're good at collecting food, and then we try to make connections for other people to other agencies. Um also in the strategic plan, there's a mention of a safe, inclusive and welcoming community where every individual can thrive and make a difference. That's awfully hard to do if you don't know where your next meal is coming from or it's not nutritious or um your family is starting. We help the children. We know we're helping the families too. And one, one interesting thing that we could um address is the Climate Action Plan of the borough addresses food waste as a topic. So we are primarily food distribution. We are also though heavily invested in food recovery and food waste or lack of waste. We work with Dickinson College to compost, we recover food. We send trucks out every day of the week to grocery stores to recover food that would really get thrown out. Otherwise, we take, we don't take plants, but we take food. We take, we take local vegetables. We take anything that is still safe and good to serve. Um we repurpose that. So again, that's not reflected in this box, but in our overall mission it is. So. Questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we, uh I mean, thank you. I'm glad to hear that. We try to create a, a real sense of, of dignity. I mean, we're meeting a need, but um it's more than just giving people food.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, can I have a folder? I'm gonna see if somebody can.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Next, Surtomo. Do you have somebody from Surtomo? No? Were we expecting by phone? No? Okay. If you want to, you can. Okay, the Summer Fair.
I'm George Douglas, a longtime member of the Board Directors of Summer Fair. Um I like to call Summer Fair a staycation. Dottie Warner, that was her little quote, staycation. Meaning, there's a lot of families out there who can't, doesn't have the resources to go on a typical summer vacation, whether it's to the beach or wherever. So we have a week-long, I'm sorry, two-week-long series of activities, thirty-five different events free of charge for families and their children. Um so some of the things we, we have, I'm in charge of this year, the baby races, that's my event. Kids Carnival, mini golf tournament, two concerts. The opening day, we have the Carlisle Town Band that was here earlier. And we end the two-week Summer Fair with the Harrisburg Symphony. The Harrisburg Symphony is sort of like the Carlisle Fireworks when you have to finance it. But, but it's done by contribution for, some, some by Summer Fair, but a lot of private contributions. Um we have uh open pool nights, two different open pool nights, one in South Middleton, one in Carlisle. We have fishing derby, Jim Thorpe track and field meet for the kids. Um it's just something to do for, for every, oh, I'm in charge of historic walking tour. We have that. It was just all these different events. The biggest thing is they're free for everyone. So um we ask you for your support, um our rest is five hundred dollars. And thank you for what you're doing for all of these groups. Very appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for George before he steps away?
I don't have any questions, but I am looking forward to the Summer Fair because my grandson is finally old enough for me to take him to things like that and behave well for a little bit. So um I'm looking forward to it this year.
Thank you, Spud.
Okay, thanks, Gresham.
Actually, just to clarify, I, it's not on your application, but I thought, I just heard you say you're requesting five hundred dollars? Okay.
It's in the, it's in the minutes.
Got it. Good. I will forget if we don't have.
Thank you, Gresham. Okay, so that brings us to the end of the outside agencies uh request. Thank you all for your presentations this evening. Um and we look forward to, to acting on these in, in June. Uh next, the meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to review and approve the April third, twenty twenty-four workshop meeting minutes.
So.
Motion by Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stewie. I'll call to question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And motion carries. Uh next, budget and finance.
I have one item for this evening. Uh I make the motion that Borough Council reaffirm the execution of contracts with Diesel Direct to purchase the following thirty-five thousand seven hundred gallons of gasoline at a fixed contract price of two point eight eight nine six per gallon. Uh forty-six thousand gallons of diesel at a fixed contract price of three dollars point zero seven 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 per gallon.
The Deputy Mayor makes a motion to reaffirm the execution of contracts with Diesel Direct. I second that motion. Is there any uh co- any, any comment? Now call to question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. We already took care of sustainability, so that brings us to new business. There is no new business. Is there any public comment this evening after you've had some time to sit there and, and think about things that might be running around in your head? None? Okay. Well, thank you for coming out tonight. And this meeting is adjourned.